Okay, folks, we will reconvene and there were no motions out of closed session.
No motions, madam chairman.
Okay, then I will move forward.
You still have to come out of the closed session.
We already did.
We did.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
You're welcome.
Good.
At this time, I would ask everyone to please join me in a moment of silence for Falkirk County Public School Bus Driver Mary Lou Robinson, who passed away on November 4th. Our thoughts and prayers are with her family. I would also like to mention that yesterday was Veterans Day, as everyone knows, and the board wants to recognize all of our veterans for their dedicated and loyal service to our country. At this time, because it's October, we already did it. We opened upstairs.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we didn't miss out.
No, we did it.
Normally, you would do it in the open meeting.
You want to do it?
Why don't you go ahead and do it?
Okay, everybody?
We love these things.
Yep. Do what, please?
Now, get out of the certification of the seat.
I think you need to vote in public before the public is saying that you all did.
The certification of the seat.
Right, maybe you're in the left.
Oh, you want us to do a pledge while we're all standing? We won't. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Everything else.
Yes, and I think he's probably right. Yeah.
Well, but actually, we opened the door.
But we opened the door.
We opened the door. We say, but that's fine. We could say it twice.
Yes.
But I don't have the paper.
Madam Chairman, I motion that the closed meeting be concluded and the board certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
Motion and a second, that the closed meeting be concluded and the board certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered. Any discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. And there were no motions out of closed session, so we will move on to Differing Abilities Awareness Month. And that was October, and Mr. Graham, Marshall Middle School Assistant Principal, is here to share a presentation with the school board this evening regarding the Multiple Disabilities Program, which will be followed by a few words from Ms. Nelson, Taylor Middle School's principal. Mr. Graham.
Well, thank you all for having me here tonight.
Yes.
Everybody see around the goodness spot where I'm not, you know, everybody. The multiple disabilities classroom came to Marshall Middle School four years ago. It's now at Taylor. The classroom is near there, but a great time and a great four years to have these students with us. And this is just the first few slides of our students. This is Kayla, Victor, and Lizzie, and Hannah, and Saul. And this, and I can't take credit for this PowerPoint, this is Louis, who was one of the assistants last year, paid this at Marshall Middle School last year for us, was kind of basically a snapshot of their entire year, the big trips they've taken and went through and see all the places they went and all the people that they saw. And this was the first day of school last year with the kids coming back. Again, more shots of the first day. And these are the different therapists that work with them, the kids. You know, this program requires quite a few people to support these kids, and really and truly, everybody does an amazing job working with these kids, what they have to do. These kids have many unique challenges, but it's amazing what they can do and what the people who are working with them really is. This is Ms. Thompson, their physical therapist, and I think they changed sort of, so I don't know if Mrs. Thompson is still with you all at Taylor. This is Arto, this is the occupational therapist. Occupational therapy is more for skills, life skills, you can see they're washing hands or catching a ball, they're sorting and folding, using any utensils, just one of many things that occupational therapy has to do in working with and teaching these children day-to-day living skills. This is Sis for speech, and not so much speech, this is a non- grown classroom, so not so much the speech that we might think would be familiar, these kids use communication devices, they use choice, they use I-Gays, so it's quite a different look for a speech therapist than you would think that you would normally see. Ms. Armstrong works, many of the students are also here in here as well. This is Ruffel for technology, and that's a big role too, because many of these kids use assistive technology in their communication devices, touchscreens on computers to make choices and answer questions, the smart board is a huge part of their classroom. There's a lot of technology needs that these kids have. You'd be amazed at what it takes to run this program. Freedom Walk, you know, we've talked about diversity in our school system and inclusivity in our school system, and the neat thing about this group was they were able to do everything all the other kids were doing, to contribute, just like all the other kids were doing. As we go through, you'll see the different things that they've done, but this was our Freedom Walk last September 11th, and they joined the rest of the students as we walked, as an entire school, we walked around the building to commemorate 9/11. This obviously is fighting breast cancer, this was last year's Breast Cancer Walk, this classroom's a part of that walk and a part of that celebration and fundraising and part of our school. Art class, Ms. Sampson, Ms. Sampson, our art teacher, and the classroom was able to go in there, as you can see, the kids, their different art projects, but they were able to participate and to enjoy art and to enjoy our art teacher, Ms. Sampson. Ms. Gastly for PE, she did an adaptive style PE class for these kids that was unique to their individual needs. They had her every day for the entire time they were there. She did a lot of things with seasonal things, and we'll see her in a couple more slides because her PE class was also recreational based, and as the seasons, apples and pumpkins and all the things she would incorporate for touch, taste, smell, just, and also just have a good time. She's done a great job with these students. Making and cooking pizza, part of the program is community-based instruction, and community-based instruction means these students are going out into the community, they're going shopping, they're coming back, they're cooking, which are life skills, important life skills. They hosted a couple of luncheons, we'll see Mr. Blaine here in a lot of English, and they put on pretty good parties, so he came to several of those.
Great food.
What's that?
Great food.
Absolutely. But again, these are important life skills for these kids to have, and going on the community as well. It's getting them integrated into communities, the different stores, they went to malls, they went to playgrounds, they went to parks, just really, they were a traveling bunch. Apples was just Gastly, the December, September thematic unit on apples, and, you know, they got to cook apples, and we went to the orchard and got apples for the kids, and they made, you know, as you said, making baked apples, they did apple-type projects. The pumpkin farm in the fall, this is over in Amesville, I believe, isn't it Amesville? Had a trip to the pumpkin patch, you know, got to go out and, you know, in the fall, it's beautiful, and got to do the field trip, I mean, there's Kayla on the hayride, and, you know, the whole class headed out on the hayride there. See the grandma's cookies, now that's the cookie sale that goes on over at the adult center over at the old Central Elementary School, and they got a chance to go there and purchase cookies that they could give as a Christmas present or bring back to school, and so that was a neat trip for them to go out on and to interact in the community again as well. Giant, they went to several grocery stores, they would prepare for their parties, and they did Thanksgiving meals, they did, you all left a line, we've all, they did Easter, they did one, they did one at Thanksgiving, and some other parties throughout the year, birthday parties for the kids, and they would go out and actually do the shopping, as you can see Hannah there in the bottom right-hand corner, she's paying, making change, I mean, she's putting things in the cart, so they're out there doing, they're out there getting things together, bringing back to school. Golden Drinks, this is a therapy running center in Middleburg, and one of our staff members, Pursuit, was able to get this off the ground, all the kids got to go over there and horseback ride, something that a lot of these kids probably have never had the opportunity to do before, and it's a neat facility, and the fact that they do it for a lot of kids. If you look at their website, there's a host of photographs, I was looking at it the other day as I was making sure it was in Middleburg, once I prepared for the presentation, but it really impacts a lot of kids, it's a neat thing. And these are the different kids, Saul riding his horse, Hannah. Build and Bear Workshop, all the students got to go last year and do the Build and Bear Workshop as a field trip, community trip, and that's at Paris Mall, well, it's in Paris Mall, so they went to a big mall, you know, they got to go, when they went out, they marched different places, tried to do different things, but there's Kyla building her bear, Hannah. Victor. And this is, I looked this up, this park was donated by a lady, and she named the Columbia John Tree Park, it's the first couple of letters of her four different children, that's how that name came about, it's not a typo, because I haven't checked it out. This is an accessible playground, actually, it's a playground for all the children, but all the children have access to this playground, and amazingly enough, I didn't realize that, but that, according to their website, is the only wheelchair swing anywhere in existence.
I bet there is.
In existence, and it's right here nearby on the plane, and it's got a little lift and ramps, so the kids can get their wheelchairs into it, they can go with or without a wheelchair if they need to, so I thought that was fascinating, but this was a trip also that your class found out about, took the kids to, so it was an accessible playground, and there's some great pictures of the kids having fun here. Slides, that one's not, it's a shame it's not a little larger, but there's a smile from year to year there, coming down the slide. Again, there's the wheelchair, which is incredible. There's some great shots there, in the bottom right corner, he's smiling, that little girl, Victor always, so did Saul, they always have a smile on their face, but I think they're particularly happy on this particular day. See the shots there. And these are shots of the kids at work, I mean, Hannah's got a daily schedule, you can see she's keeping track of weather there, touchscreens for choices, these kids are, they're assessed, just like the other kids are, they do the VAT, which is the Virginia Alternative Assessment Program, but they're responsible for grade level, grade level adapted SOL, so they have a job to do as well, just like the rest of our kids, and you can see the different communication devices in the bottom left corner, she's working on her math there. Here's Kayla, and you can see there's different pictures there, so through choice, as they've talked about different things, you know, choose, we're talking about history, we're talking about geography, whatever, the choices, and some of the kids choose things by even communicating by I-Gays. Some use assistive technology to choose A or B, or they touch on the computer screen, but there's Kayla working on her VAT assessment. Lizzie at work as well, the smart board, again, the smart board's such a critical part of the classroom. As you can see up there, they're stunning, so there's some choices going on there, Lizzie in the upper right corner. And here's Victor, Victor's recycling down on the bottom left there, but also choices there, some of the things that these kids learn, it's amazing what they're required to do, so it's a lot of assessment that these ladies have to keep track of. And Saul left us last year, he might come back to his home country. Of the five students, two are still in the middle school program, and two have moved on to high school. There's Hannah working on her math, and Victor above again. And there's Victor, and that's, he's actually paying at the counter at one of the grocery stores ready for change. Lizzie, they made wreaths as a project, and you push in the tissue papers, the wreath, and so Lizzie's helping make her wreath. And there's the life cycle of a cat, so that can show you what these kids are, you know, what these kids are responsible for. And there's Hannah hard at work, there's recycling, Hannah's working on her own choices, Kayla from the bottom too there. And this is just kind of at Marshall Middle School, there's myself and the principal, there's Miss Steady, with Saul one day in the cafeteria, Ms. Darnell, Saul, and at the bottom there, there's Mr. Blaine down there, he brought business for one of the parties that day down the bottom left corner, and Hannah outside on campus. And I believe, these were probably some of the last days he had at home, weren't they? So kind of winding down here towards the end of the school year, Lizzie headed home. There's Hannah on the bus headed home at the end of the day. And these kids come from all over the county, and there's one middle school program, there's a elementary program at Bradley, the kids came to Marshall Mount at Taylor for the middle school program, and there's two high school programs, depending on the exact needs of the student, when they hit high school, they go to Falkirk Liberty. And now, just to introduce some of the folks that work with the students, and Ms. Nelson's going to say if she was at the end, so I don't want to overlap too much, but that's Ms. Darnell, she's been with the program since it started at Marshall Middle School. And really, you really have to get in with these kids, and you've got to work hand-in-hand and one-on-one, there's a lot of personal contact, there's a lot of time involved with these kids, and it's no easy chore, they're special people, and I can assure you of that. Mrs. Lewis, and actually, she made this program last year, so she's also the same thing I can say about her as well. Mrs. King is, was part of Fiction, as a substitute, she's a substitute there for everybody there, but when she wasn't substitute, she was volunteering in the classroom, and she's always out there finding somebody to donate something, or bring in the classroom, or telling me about a trip that she was planning, and where the kids were going to go, and so she was in a little part. Ms. Langston, the teacher for the program, left last year, her husband moved to Georgia, so unfortunately, we lost her, but now it's in the very capable hands, and Michelle Matika is there at Taylor now, and she's taking over the little teacher there, and I hear that things are still going very well there. And just to follow up, our five students from last year, and like I said, what a great group of kids, and a really powerful part of this is that these kids, not only was it great to have them in our building for the students, for them, but it just, the diversity it brings to our entire school community, I mean, our students would work with these kids in the adaptive PE class, I mean, we had kids that were arguing over who got to push, you know, somebody around in the gym, or take them somewhere, or do things with them, we had students that went down, getting their international enrichment time and volunteered with this class, so it really brings about much more than just having that class there, it also teaches the rest of our students about those people that are different than us. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Well, good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the school board and administration. I am very honored to have a moment to talk with you about this program. Mr. Graham has done a wonderful job introducing you to our children. If you want to have a truly joyous day, come over and see them when they're getting off the bus, and get one of those precious smiles from Victor, or see Kayla as she comes in, ready for breakfast, and although she may not have the words to tell you, we understand her language, and we know what she wants. We are very, very pleased at Taylor to be serving our students with multiple disabilities. We appreciate the hard work that was done with these students at Marshall Middle School, it was a wonderful program, as you have seen tonight. We also appreciate our feeder elementary school, Bradley, and our high schools. Every year, the program and the services for students with multiple disabilities evolves as the children change and their individual needs change. We have a dedicated team of teachers, assistants, occupational therapists, physical therapists, assistive technology, and other specialists who work together to plan, implement, and track all of the academic, functional, and daily activities of our students. At Taylor Middle School, the class has acclimated wonderfully due to the support of everybody across the board, teachers, students, parents, our nurse, the custodial staff, the cafeteria staff, the office staff, bus drivers, school administration, guidance, you name it, we work together. It's truly a team effort, it's a joy to watch our students and staff reach out and make our new students feel an integral part of our school community, and they are indeed a part of everything that we do. The first day of school, when we did our discipline assemblies, the kids were in there, and they were attentive, they watched me the whole time, and they listened to everything that every child in that school heard. When any student goes into a new school, it does take some time for them to get used to the new setting. Moving the program for students with multiple disabilities has required construction, moving and trying to obtain new materials, and many other hidden supports that took time, hard work, and funding to complete. And I must give kudos to our facilities department, because they did a wonderful job of getting the project not only done in time, but a month early, and that was absolutely incredible. At TMS, our students and staff have been welcomed by peers and adults. Typical peers come into the room each day, or several times during the week, to work on social and communication skills with the students, they're making connections, and they're very kind and loving and supportive. Teachers are making continual effort to learn about the program and how the whole school can support our new students, and the class joined in on our seventh-grade field trip to Messick's Farm this year, and as I said, they've attended all of our major school events. While the program has changed locations, the dedication and love of all of those who interact with our students is still evident every day, and you saw that dedication and love in those lovely snapshots that Mr. Graham presented. And I am fortunate this evening to be able to introduce to you again, because I do feel that they deserve kudos, our teacher for the program, Ms. Matika, and I'm going to ask each of you to please stand up, if you will. Our assistants, Ms. Darnell, Ms. Lewis, and Ms. King. They are commended for their love and commitment to our students. Every single day, they're in there working hard, giving all the love and dedication just unswervingly, and ladies, we do indeed applaud you and thank you so much. And please, when you want your heart lifted, come over to Taylor and come down to the classroom, I promise you, it will be a wonderful experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, now we will move to announcements. There will be a finance committee meeting Wednesday, November 14th, at 5:00 PM in the school administration conference room. The Parks and Recreation Cooperative will meet Tuesday, November 20th, at 6:00 PM in the Alice Jane Child's Basement Conference Room. Chairman's night, we will probably have to reschedule that, or we will not have Chairman's Night, okay? Okay. The school board work session is Monday, November 26th, at 6:00 PM in the school administration conference room. There will be a health advisory committee meeting Wednesday, December 5th, at 8:00 AM in the central complex meeting room. There will be a special education advisory committee meeting Wednesday, December 5th, at 5:30 PM in the central complex meeting room A. There will be a school support council meeting Thursday, December 6th, at 7:00 PM in the school administration conference room. The school board will meet in an undisclosed location Monday, November 26th, Friday, December 7th, and Saturday, December 8th, to interview candidates for the superintendent's position. And the next school board meeting is Monday, December 10th, at 7:00 PM in the Warren Green Building. And at this time, I don't believe there is a response, so we will move to citizens' time. The school board appreciates public input, however, due to time constraints, citizens' time is not a time for dialogue. Please limit your comments to three minutes, matters relating to personal or personnel issues should not be discussed. The school board welcomes the public's input and comments and believes community involvement is an important component of a successful school division, and I believe I have three signed up, and the first one is Kristen Stoboe, I hope I didn't slaughter that. Come on up, if you would, introduce yourself and state your magisterial district.
Hi, my name is Kristen Stoboe, I'm in the Center Voting District, I'm used to microphones, so forgive me. I am the Brumfield Elementary School Running Club Coordinator, and I'm currently serving as the PTO Vice President at Brumfield. I know that you received a letter this afternoon from our PTO president regarding the proposed running path.
Yeah, I don't know that everybody has had a chance to see.
Okay.
I saw it, but I didn't get to read it.
We'll eventually get your copies of that then. Okay. I'm here tonight to ask that any decisions regarding the proposed Brumfield running path be tabled until our planning committee is able to make a complete presentation to you all as the school board. Based on the response we have received from the facilities department contacts, and then also in reading the minutes to the October 12th building committee meeting, those of us who have been planning and researching and finding solutions for this running path feel like just not all of the elements of our plan have been represented to you for consideration, so we are asking for the opportunity to have a two-way discussion about every last detail of this proposal, and just to allow you, to fill you in to everything that we have in our vision. I just want to point out three things that we feel like are really important for your consideration to keep the discussion moving forward. One of the things is that our, the running path would not just be used by the running club during that hour before of school. The intention of this path is to be used all day long by all the different grade levels, and then certainly PE classes as well. It was given, it was offered to us a solution, and even though we really appreciate getting permission to use the Taylor Track in the morning before school, one of the details of that solution is that the kids still have to walk through wet grass to the Taylor Track and then back to Brumfield after using the dry path, and the entire intention of our running path was to keep the kids out of wet grass. So, you know, we're willing to work with this other idea, but the wet grass is the problem, you know, kids are going into school with wet pants and whatnot. So, the second point that I want to mention is that it was explained to us that Parks and Recreation wants to use the area in the future. We're also going to pay for it all ourselves. Can I see my last paragraph? Okay, so.
Thirty seconds.
We spoke to Parks and Rec, and they are fully willing to work with us and cooperate and get all the plans together, we're going to fundraise for the entire thing. We're not asking the school district to pay for a dime, we're not asking the school district to make any effort in executing the project, and we just would like the opportunity to keep on discussing this with all of you and all the players involved.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for giving me extra thirty seconds.
Laura Henson.
Hi, I'm Laura Henson, I'm also from Center District, and I'm also here as a parent. I've been at Brumfield since 2006, I've also been involved in the running path since 2007. I take pride in, our school has had running path five days a week, and it is all supported by parents, we have not asked for teachers to help, we've been raising money for several years now on our own, and even the students have raised money on their own. I just want to say that I feel that we have other students who would like to be in the running club, but unfortunately, only have one pair of shoes, and once their shoes and socks are wet, they're very discouraged and they're cold. We also want to make a point that we feel that a lot of decision-making has been made without our involvement, we have had this passion, the PTO has had this passion, the running club members have had this passion now since 2007. So this isn't an idea that we just came up with overnight, it's something that we've been working towards, and in all past administrations, we have presented it to the administration, and they, we, they have said, this is a great idea, keep working on it. So we have kept working on it, and all of a sudden, this year, it has come to a screeching halt. All presentations, we were told we did not need to be there, so we feel like we've had improper representation for this project, and we are just asking for an opportunity to actually meet with you and give you full detail and a more proper representation of what our idea and goal is, and we are willing to compromise with anything. This project is predominantly for the children. I don't run, I don't ever want to run, I do work out, but it's also, one of our T-shirts, we have several T-shirts that we've made every year, and it says, "Healthy brains, healthy bodies," and this is all for the health of the children, to instill in them that it's important to stay healthy, not only to eat right, but to exercise, and this is a program that all of our children can come to. And like I say, it's five days a week, except when it's wet. Sure. And I see the program at Pierce Middle School, and that looks great, I mean, we'd love to have that too, and we're not asking for any money.
Thank you. Helen Morse.
I think she's bad. I think she'll.
Okay. Okay, then we will move to reports. Let's see, who wants to report, run.
Just like to report on a couple of things. Number one, the students are really looking forward to the Farmer's Almanac. It says we're going to have a lot of snow this year. I toured a few schools with the security measures, the buzz, the buzz-in that I know we're supporting to move through many schools this year. Great, I was really impressed with the, how that worked. So want to thank the people who've worked on that, piloted that program, and are moving it forward. I've also met with folks from food service and the bus drivers, employees of ours who form little groups, just about some of the issues they're having. They brought up some of the problems they're having this year with not just pay, but some of the policies in terms of, for bus drivers, for routes, and for cafeteria workers who are looking at still antiquated equipment. And we have incredible people in our system and working, but, you know, kind of getting a real glimpse into the day-to-day life of the, our food service workers and our bus drivers and what they're going through. And as far as I know, this is something that we are looking to probably talk about continuing this year. So, you know, what we, what we see on paper, I hear on the phone with folks, so I'm glad we're addressing that.
Madam Chair, I just want to press upon everybody that I can't say enough about what's going on over that Faukeer High School and that total renovation process. Things are going great, that we're on schedule. In fact, we plan to have students in those classrooms at the beginning of the next school year without fail.
Oh, absolutely. And they are in the media center.
They're in the media center now. You should see that the, the new media center, it is absolutely beautiful. A couple of other things, the, let's see, the tank replacement up at Marshall Middle School in Coleman that we've been trying to get done for quite some time now. All of the approvals are in place, the permitting is, is, is well on the way, and I think, and this is also for Southeastern as well. Yeah. And we have a public hearing on this subject the first week of December. What's, I forget what date it was. Jan, what, what day is it? We having a public hearing on it? I know it's the first week of December.
The fifth, I believe.
The fifth, I believe it is, too. Okay.
The Planning Commission.
Yeah, the Planning Commission. Right. Right. Yeah. So things are going great from that perspective.
Okay.
I just attended, we attended the Health Advisory Committee meeting, and the thing that's going on, the most active thing is the, we're going to create champions at each of the schools to champion health and get us, the committee, informed of what's going on at all the schools. And that's going very well. And I think that's it as far as the Health Advisory Committee. I also attended the School Support Council meeting, and the, Michael Ranger made a nice presentation about the whole energy program that he's got going that was great, and he can, everybody can read it on his energy, energize-fauceer.com website, all his stuff. And I think that's it. I think that's it, everything.
I will just make sure everybody knows that the building committee minutes that you've received first, they have been amended at our meeting last week, and the correct ones now should be out there. Okay? And it was, it was regarding the Brumfield project. Okay. That's all I have. Dr. Lewis? Nothing? Okay. Then we move to, no, not you. Who do we move to? Finance?
Finance.
Yes. Who's finance tonight? Okay.
You wear a lot of hats over.
Well, Mrs. Kotov could not be here tonight, so I was asked to stand up here and just look at you for a minute to see if you had questions. Really, this report is just for the first three months of the year, 25% gone of the year has passed, so there's not a lot in the report. It was presented to the finance committee meeting, so they have seen it, and all the percentages are pretty typical with what we have done in prior years at the same, for the same period of time. So are there any questions?
I do not have any. Okay. Excellent job. Now, Ms. Downs, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say something. We're, you know, year over year, we see, we're seeing the statistics on health costs, on healthcare costs.
Yes.
I think there may be some fairly interesting things coming out from this year. I mean, we were only about three months into it, but, you know, always crossing fingers that that's going to be maintained at a reasonable level, not have the 20% growth rates or...
Fifteen.
Exactly.
So we're trending in the right direction right now?
We're seeing only a few months on that, but it's, you know, we have one month higher and then a couple of months, I think, a little bit lower. So hopefully after an anomaly, it's looking.
Let's hope so.
Looking a little better then.
Yep.
Good day, Madam Chair, members of the school board, Dr. Lewis. The Human Resources Month Report, we have eight certified vacancies that we are still recruiting for. We have sixteen classified vacancies. We're also currently recruiting for substitute food service workers, school nurses, as well as teachers. And that orientation is on December eleventh, but if we find certified nurses before that, we will bring them in and have one-on-one orientations. Any questions this evening?
No.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Consent agenda. Motion.
Madam Chair, I motion that the school board approve the following. Minutes of the September the twenty-third special school board meeting and work session, the October the eighth school board meeting, the October the thirteenth school board retreat meeting, and the October the twenty-second special school board meeting and work session. Also, the payment of bills, personnel actions, and religious exemptions, 111212 dot one and 111212 dot two.
Second.
Hit it.
Very good. Motion and a second that the school board approve the minutes of the September twenty-third special school board meeting and work session, the October eighth school board meeting, the October thirteenth school board retreat meeting, the October twenty-second special school board meeting and work session, payment of bills, personnel actions, and religious exemptions, 111212 dot one and dot two. Any discussions? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? And the motion carries. And at this time, Dr. Lewis, you have a good fun thing.
I just have an introduction to make. Mr. Dennis Atkins is with us this evening. Just a few moments ago, you appointed him to be Assistant Principal at Grace Miller Elementary School. Mr. Atkins comes to us from Hanover County Public Schools where he currently is test coordinator at Patrick Henry High School. Prior to that, he served as their math department head, and Danielle, his wife, is here with him. And the smiling lady next to her is Trudy Williams, who's been waiting for an assistant principal for the first quarter of this school year. So she's delighted probably more than any of us.
Yes.
Has chosen to come, but we welcome him. We know he's going to do great things, and we're real excited that he begins tomorrow morning.
Oh, wonderful.
At the crack of dawn, so.
If not before.
That's right.
Welcome. Information items, and I believe, Dr. Lewis, it's your turn, the review of key indicators.
Ginger. Good evening. As has become our practice over the last number of years, this evening, I am going to present to you the key indicator presentation that you first received at the retreat in October. It has become our tradition to reveal key indicator results in, at the retreat and then bring them at the next available meeting to the board and the public at the public meeting. A number of years ago, we worked together to define key indicators of academic performance. Like most businesses, we try to pick those indicators that we believe are reflective of the things that we value to measure so we can make sure that we are, we continue to improve year over year. Two years ago, we added operational indicators to those so that we could look not only at our academic performance, but also at the efficiency of operation of the school system in general. Before I begin, and I promised to be, to go quickly through these, Ms. Wolf brought up at our retreat, and I think it was very timely, that it's important that we review each year those things that we measure because they reflect, they reflect those things that we value. And because we live in dynamic times, from year to year, we may choose to discontinue measuring certain indicators and select other indicators to add. This is not, by no means set in stone. So I encourage the board in the years ahead to continue to evaluate what it is that we value and how it can be measured best. Because I do think that it's, you know, I think that to say, "Well, we're doing a good job," that's great, feels good, but at the end of the day, it's important to be able to hang your hat on data that would indicate that in fact we are doing well. So tonight, what I'm going to do quickly is run through a number of slides that will give you our progress from the 2011, 2012 school year. First, our mission statement. Faukeer County Public Schools, the core educator of an historic and naturally beautiful community, is committed to ensuring the development of competent, responsible, and broadly educated citizens by cultivating the unique potential and character of each learner for a successful future. The six indicators that we currently measure include school accreditation with a goal to reach and maintain 100% accreditation of our schools, AYP target to improve subgroup performance and that make sure that all schools make AYP, and we're going to find that that's an evolving indicator this evening. SAT target, a number of years ago, the old SAT that had two components was enlarged to three by adding the writing. And so now, the goal for us would be at 1650 or to score at 1550, excuse me, 550 in each of the three areas. That would be equivalent for those of us who took the SAT a long time ago of 1100. Indicator four is the AP test, Advanced Placement. Our target is to get 60% of our students scoring at three or above and also to increase participation annually to grow the number of students who engage in rigorous courses at school. Indicator five, graduation rate. This target is to increase the on-time graduation rate. About four years ago, the state began to measure graduation rate by taking a look at cohorts who come in the ninth grade and what percentage of those students actually graduate four years later. And so now we have a number of years' worth of data to take a look at trends. And then finally, the anecdotal data, the annual graduation survey each year. We survey seniors literally as they walk out the door. Typically, they take this survey at graduation rehearsals, so they have nothing to lose, and it's done anonymously, so we think we get a pretty good picture. Also, for the first time, we're beginning to get data in over eighteen, eighteen-month period, so that now we're looking at seniors who graduated a year and a half ago, looking back at their high school experience, and, and we're, we're seeing if they still feel the same way about their school and their experience a year and a half later, which I think is instructive. And you have all that information. I'm not going to be able to share all that with you this evening, but I think that, that I would really urge the board to continue the practice of doing this, particularly at eighteen months and at five years, because I think that look back, people, you really can tell whether people feel that their education served them well when they're at five years out and they can see how it served them as they went through college. Indicator one, school accreditation, and our, again, our current level of performance. All Faukeer County Public Schools are fully accredited, and I'm pleased to say that that happened for the first time in 2008, and since that time, in each year, all of our schools have been fully accredited. So I think that is a success story and something of which we should be very proud. Indicator two is AYP. You know, for the longest time under No Child Left Behind, we were required to make adequate yearly progress, and it was part of the state, of, excuse me, the federal accountability movement. Virginia, in this past year, received, I wouldn't use the word reprieve, but that probably would be wrong, but we were given a waiver from the AYP. Dr. Mitchell's nodding, so reprieve probably. You'll remember the, the standard was, under AYP, 2014 was the year in which every student was going to pass every test every time. And as we got closer or to that date, it became increasingly apparent that that wasn't going to happen. It was an unrealistic goal. And now, with the waiver that's been approved by the federal government, Virginia is looking at a different set of standards called Federal Annual Measurable Objectives. So this year's data really reflect the first year of information, kind of our benchmarking year, and I think that it will be instructive for us in, in years forward to be able to measure back against this first year using the Federal Annual Measurable Objectives. And you can see that the, they are broken down differently into proficiency gaps, proficiency gap one, including limited English, children with limited English proficiency, economically disadvantaged children, and children with disabilities, proficiency gap group, that should be two, I believe. Sorry for the confusion. That would be black students, then proficiency gap three, Hispanic students, students with disabilities individually, limited, students with limited English proficiency individually, students who are economically disadvantaged individually, Asian students, and white students. And you can see for each of these different subjects, the annual measurable objective is different, and that was set by the State Department, the State Department, not without controversy, based on recent student performance, so that they could gauge a baseline where different groups of students should begin.
I have a real problem with that.
It's, and this was quite a controversial decision by the State Department, but keep in mind, some of what they were required to do, they were required to do in order to have their waiver approved by the federal government. But you can see there's reading and mathematics, and then the graduation index. And each of those, except for the graduation index, has a different cut score or percentage pass rate for different, either gap group or individual groups of students. The Federal Annual Measurable Objective, quick analysis, we continue to do well in science, history and social science achievement is making an incremental comeback. You'll remember a number of years ago, they created new assessments, and we saw a six percentage dip, I think it was from 90% to 84%, and slowly now we see the history scores improving. That same thing occurred with math in this past year as they redid the assessments, but we did see, for instance, our limited English proficiency students achieved actually had a higher pass rate despite the fact that those math assessments changed. So there were, there were some bright moments as well. Concerns, we've seen a slight dip in writing and reading between one and five percentage points. New assessments in math show that we have work to do to ensure that the taught curriculum is aligned with tested curriculum. But in defense of that, this is a, a new experience with these math standards, and I think, just like with history, over the next year or two, we'll begin to get a handle on it. And our experience was very similar, actually slightly better than other school divisions' experiences statewide. And then finally, the achievement disparity among students with disabilities, black students, and economically disadvantaged students must remain our focus, and I think we, we have known that through our experience with AYP, and it continues to be the case as we move with Federal Annual Measurable Objectives. To close the gap, set minimum goals to decrease the failure rate by 10%, make the R10 benchmark. That basically is to reduce the failure rate by 10%. Schools must submit improvement plans to address the gap areas and teacher qualities, so every school will be doing that. A continuous focus on high expectation practices in narrowing the achievement gap, Young Scholars Program, flexible grouping practices, widening GT services for underserved population. And I think we, but we all believe that to, to raise the scores for all children, our expectations for performance of all children has to rise. And so we do that not only in the things we say, but in the things we do in school that would require students to take more rigorous coursework. A continued division-wide common assessments in grades three through eight in reading and math, two through eight in history, four, five, and seven. We've been doing that for the last number of years. We believe it's an important practice to continue. And then mathematics graduate courses, continue to work with our math staff to make sure that they're up to date, up to speed, and prepared to handle the, handle the rigor in the new, with the new math expectations and math assessments, and make sure our staff are prepared as well. The SAT, good news this year in the SAT, as you can say, as can see, we, we had... The SAT, good news this year in the SAT, as you can say, as can see, we, we had a pretty good year, 1537. We're making progress. There's still as much progress that needs to be made. One of the things that we're doing, you can see, we, you know, the 1537 compares favorably. We continue to perform above the state average of 1510, above the national average of 1477. But we believe our students are capable of scoring on average at significantly higher levels. One of the things we've begun to do, and it's starting to gain traction now, is offer the Kaplan course for SAT preparation. When we off, the first few times we offered it, we had to kind of move kids in. Now we have waiting lists. And so I think that if we can change the culture, preparation for the SAT is critically important. And the more we find our students preparing, I think, the more likely we are to see scores improve. Also, the ACT, which is an alternative to the SAT, is becoming increasingly popular. One of the things we need to do is begin to look at our students' performance on the ACT as well, and see if there are things we can do to help students do well on that test. It's just gaining some traction in our area as it is in Virginia. For years, on the coast, the SAT prevailed, and in the middle of the country, the ACT was more popular. And now the ACT is becoming increasingly popular, both on the west coast and on the east coast, as an alternative to the SAT. But again, our outcomes, they're good. Could they be better? Absolutely. It continues to be our focus. Advanced Placement. Now here, this is like really a good news story, so I'm going to take a moment so we can all bask. We, we have a target of 60% of our students scoring three or above. Now, keep in mind, Fauquier County is rather unique in that we require every student who enrolls in an AP test to take the exam. Most school divisions don't require that. Some do, but most don't. And so the state, if you look at the state three and above score, it typically is around 59 and 60%. Ours is lower, but that is because we require every student to take it. But you can see that despite the fact that we tend to hold our own in that low 40 range with three or above, each year, we've increased participation. In this past year, 814 students took 1,432 tests. And that's a significant increase over the year before, which was a significant increase over the year before. And so we're very, very excited about that. Fauquier students scored three or above on 42.5% of the AP test taken, falls below the average of 60.2%, but it should be noticed that unlike most Virginia school divisions, Fauquier requires all students to enroll, enrolled in AP classes to take the test. Additionally, Fauquier has increased the number of students taking the AP test from 362 students taking 644 tests in 2004 to 814 students taking 1,432 tests this past year. This extraordinary increase in the number of AP tests is an indication of our successful efforts to raise academic expectations for all students. Implementation of a number of strategies should help increase the rate of three or above performance over the next two years, but that really is a discussion for a different day. It's, it is a very difficult thing to do for a number of technical reasons, and we'll have that conversation perhaps at another time. But before I go to the next slide, I do want to share with you some exciting news. We were not allowed to release this until today because the College Board was going to make a formal announcement today. However, they didn't realize it was Veterans Day. So we were waiting for their formal announcement, and when we contacted them, they said, we're going to do it tomorrow because it's Veterans Day. But they did give us the go-ahead to release this information publicly. Fauquier County has been named to the AP Honor Roll for expanding opportunity and improving performance for Advanced Placement students. And we have a certificate from the board, and the release reads as follows. Congratulations to you and your colleagues in Fauquier County Public Schools for being selected for the Third Annual AP District Honor Roll. A total of 539 school districts across the U.S. and Canada are being honored by the College Board for simultaneously increasing access to Advanced Placement coursework while maintaining or increasing the percentage of students scoring at three or above on the AP exams. Your school division is only one of 12 in Virginia who met the criteria to be placed on the AP Honor Roll this year. So congratulations.
That's great. That's excellent.
I'd like to say that this is kind of the culmination of a serious effort that began many years ago, over 10 years ago, with Dr. Mitchell's leadership and the leadership of those people in her department who work in the subject levels to increase the number of students who are taking AP tests, to encourage rigor in the curriculum. This didn't happen overnight. It happened over time, and our hat goes off to Dr. Mitchell and her staff. And I'm hoping that we can continue a conversation over time because we're doing very, very well. And the next part of this is to try to find ways to increase that number of students who score three or above. It can be done, but it's, it's going to take a lot of hard work and a lot of conversations with the community, because a lot of it has to do with students who may or may not need that credit, taking the test very, very seriously. So we'll, we'll continue that conversation a little bit, but that was some good news I wanted to share. Graduation rate, this number changed, by the way, the number at the retreat was incorrect, and so we fixed it. Our on-time graduation rate has increased to 93.1. Our goal, a number of years ago, is to increase the rate over 90%. The first year, it was 86%, and then in 2010, jumped to 90.3, then to 90.5, and this year, 93.1. And so we're very pleased and proud of that. It puts us in the top group in the, in the state. I don't know exactly what rank, but clearly among the top school divisions in regard to that. I'll, I'll try to get that for you by the work session so you can know where we rank. But that, I think that's an excellent outcome. And again, this is reflective of the number of students who begin school in the ninth grade and then graduate on time for years. The graduation survey, again, this is just a snapshot. You got the complete survey results of the retreat. But as you can see, our students really do feel good about the work that's going on. As I said, this is an anonymous survey done by students literally who have one foot out the door. So there's no reason for them to be less than candid. And overwhelmingly, our students believe that their experiences in our high schools are positive ones. And perhaps, this, this is coordinated by our three high school principals through this Parkinson's office, and they work together to get this data together. And it may be that the board wants to take some time at a work session to really kind of delve into it and take a look. But all the feedback we're getting, most of the feedback is very, very good. Moving on to operational indicators, a number of years ago, I think two, we decided we wanted to measure some other things to see how we were doing. One of those, per pupil expenditure, the funding application as cited by the DOE, energy efficiency index, turnover rate on staff, and then per mile transportation costs. You can see that this is basically where we rank relative to other school divisions. Sometimes kind of hard to figure out what this means because as your ranking goes up or down, it could have, be a function of the way you're operating or the way other divisions are operating relative to the way you're operating. But you can see that in terms of total dispersments, we were 56 out of 132 school divisions, which means that our overall dispersments are, relative to others, less than they were. And I guess when you, when you have a budget that stays pretty much stagnant for a number of years, others tend to move by. Now, when you look at instruction, we tend to spend, spend most of our funding, or a large portion, for instruction. We ranked 23rd out of 132 in terms of dollars spent on instruction, and 78 out of 132 in terms of dollars spent on administration. And you can see while we really held firm in instruction, the rating in administration has, has dropped a bit. And so I'm not quite sure why that's happened, but that's something we can talk to Ms. Cottab about. But overall, I think the news is positive. In terms of funding application, nothing much has changed through the years. About eight out of 10 dollars is spent on instruction, and you can see in the other areas, most of what we do from year to year remains the same in terms of the way we proportion funding for each of these different areas. Energy efficiency, I'm really pleased to report that we continue to do very well in terms of using energy. For the fourth year in a row, we have reduced the number of BTUs per square foot that we have used. And also, you can see that our carbon footprint continues to shrink. While I'm pleased to report this, the fact is that we, our costs are going up. So despite the fact that we are using less energy, our costs have, have gone up. So it, I mean, this really is wonderful in the sense that you can only imagine had we not reduced our use, where our costs would be. But there's an inevitability, I think, that the cost for, for energy will continue to rise, so it's really in our interest to watch this closely and make sure the trend is in the right direction. Turnover rate, this is important for us to look at trends in our employment. You can see in terms of teacher turnover and principal turnover and other certificated positions, we do very well in terms of, if you look relative to other school divisions, I would say those rates of turnover are very, very low. But when you get to bus drivers and custodians, school nurses, and food service employees, those four groups particularly, you can see that we are continuing to have a difficult time retaining folks who serve us in that, in those capacities. And I think, and we talked about this at the retreat in terms of budget goals, but clearly, compensation for individuals who work as bus drivers, custodians, nurses, and food service personnel have to be high on the agenda as the board works towards its budget for 2014. But I, you know, we don't want to just focus on the bad news. When you look at the retention of teachers and principals and other certified personnel, we've done a good job there. And so I think it really, it's more a reflection on compensation than it is on people's perceptions of their opportunity to work in Fauquier County. And we'll be talking about, more about this during the budget season. Transportation costs, as you can see, we have reduced transportation costs. Again, in Fauquier, as transportation costs, costs around the state have gone up. We, our rank has improved. But again, I'm not quite sure, this, the data, we understand, we don't really understand the cause, and so we're going to continue to look at that. But I, I think to some degree that it's the way that these facts are calculated by the Department of Education and Transportation, because these numbers are taken, I believe, through the Department of Education, are they not?
And we do know the cause now.
Oh, okay.
And I apologize that I didn't mention this to you earlier. In 2011, in the, before 2011, school, the state DOE did not allow us to calculate the miles that we drove.
Cars.
And we argued that point with them, and they reluctantly allowed us to do that in 2011. And in 2012, they've started doing it across the state. And we, we have a lot of cars out there that were driving, a lot of special ed students, for example, too.
Right.
Which means if we were to go back.
So that's why the cost per mile went down, because we were able to use, put those miles in.
In the calculation?
But it's student, transportation for students.
Correct.
Primarily, yes.
Right.
Okay. People aren't just driving around in cars, it's students.
No.
Well, I, I just knew that one was going to have legs.
And some of it is the students that actually go out.
That's right.
Student transport.
That's right. Student transportation. Very good.
Quickly, these are our milestones for aspirations 2015. The board will get a mid-year report in February. Again, we, we're involved with fewer plans this year. A lot of that was budget-driven, but we also wanted to catch up on some plans that we had ongoing from years past. But these dates will be coming up in the not-too-distant future. I like to end with this. It's Dr. Mitchell's favorite quote. It comes from Jim Collins' book, Good to Great. It's old now, but it's timeless in some respects. People need to realize that improvement isn't a destination, it's a process. And that what we need to do, the reason we do this, is because we want to look each year and make sure we're doing a little bit better than we were the year before. You know, some years, you find that's true, and other years, perhaps not, but at least it keeps you informed, and it informs the work that you do. And so when we do things well, we know it. When we do things not as well as we'd like, we know that, too. But the fact is that all great transformations never happen in one fell swoop. There's no single defining action, no grand program, no killer innovation, no solitary lucky break, no miracle moment. Improvement resembles pushing a flywheel relentlessly in one direction, turn upon turn, building momentum until a point of breakthrough and beyond. And that's what our work is, continually trying to assess what we're doing, figuring out whether there's a better way for us to do it, and then implementing change. And that's why we take the time to look at these indicators. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
No, I, I would just like to state that a lot of this progress is due to your great leadership the last years that you've been here, and I really want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
It's been excellent.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Wills now will highlight the student achievement report.
You should have received your book.
We did.
Okay. It's a privilege to put this together for you every year, and it contains our school accreditation and the new federal, it's a multiple, Federal Annual Measurable Objectives. We lovingly call it FAMO.
Yeah.
Taking its place with AYP. We also have the AYP results in here over the years, and the SAT. The first page, though, if you look at, it tells the table of contents so that you can see how to read it. All the press releases from the state are actually in the very beginning, and then the accountability terms. So all the different language that they use, it's like a vocabulary sheet of all the different words. And then we have the division summary, which we'll look at together in a moment, and I'll just to point out how to read it. And then it follows by each of the schools alphabetically, and it gives the schools information, which includes not just how they did it, but how they did it according to the state and to the division in each of the categories. So if you look at the first page, which is showing up here, is the division. It shows you that what Dr. Lewis talked about, the new terminology, it's no longer AYP, and it says that Fauquier County and the division did not meet all federal AMOs. And I'll show you in a moment where we shined and where we have to work. But it also talks about that proficiency gap dashboard. And that's all new terminology this year, as we're looking at the waiver and how the federal government and state have agreed to go forward in helping all divisions in our, in our state move up with their gap groups. And so what Dr. Lewis has spoken about, that gap group one is listed, and it tells you what the targets were and how we did. And that third column, where they actually say that for gap group one in our division, reading, we made it, that means in the current year. For the gap group, the next group of all, all students, gap group one, we made it with a three-year roll-up, averaging the three years. And then for gap group two, the black students, we made it with current. And the Hispanic is gap group three, and we made that with the current. They've given you the, the three different ways to make your federal AMO. One is the current, one is the three-year roll-up average, and the other one that Dr. Lewis has encouraged schools to work hard on is to reduce the failure rate by 10%. And if you do that, then they'll give you a make in it. We made it, no call it just R10, yes. You turn the next page, and you'll see that there's also participation still. And I tell the schools to make sure when they think about participation, that's how many of the students enrolled in a class that took the test, that they don't take it for granted. The federal government and the state are still making it a 95% participation rate because it's hard for a lot of divisions to make it. In our division, as you look through the schools' data, you'll find that most of our schools made 100 to 99% in all sub-group testing. So I'm really proud that they're, you know, working it hard, the kids are getting access to the curriculum and access to the test. And the students that you saw earlier, that, we were talking about at Marshall, their scores are all rolled into everything, with the VAPs counting for the federal accountability and for graduation and for, for the accreditation. So they're a part of this community, just as every other student is in grades, if you're lucky to be in grades three through 11, we will test you. So this is all, all the results. But as a vision, they're really doing a great job getting everyone to have opportunity. You'll see that there are nine categories. Now, in the old AYP, there was 27. In the new, well, we have 36. Unless you're in high school and you're the division, well, then you have 45.
Oh, my gosh.
So sometimes, you know, change and newness is, it has its price. And so they're breaking things down, but they're adding to what we have to perform. So the word that Dr. Lewis made, mentioned earlier about the waivers made me appropriate. The performance rates, again, they, they show how we do as a division, and you'll see here that in reading, a number of them, we made the current yes, meaning one first year, the three-year, and then we also have an R10. three-year, and then we also have an R10 for our limited English proficiency students. And then across that column, they talk about math, and the math, we made all but one in the current year as a division, and only one area did we make it three-year. So you might say, well, then how come we didn't make it? Well, you know, I mean, look, we made it in all these participation, and we made all these criterias. It's the next stickler. It's the federal graduation indicator, lovingly known as FGI, four, five and six. We did really great with the on-time graduation from the state. But when we went through the lens of the federal government, we fell short. And the reason for that is the state accepts and honors and gives points for graduation for GED students who have finished for modified and standard, and modified and IEP diplomas for our special ed students. The federal government does not see these as graduating.
Let me say that again now.
I know. Yes. Okay, we made our on-time graduation, and because the state of Virginia acknowledges all of these certificates that they give for graduation, they give you points for on-time, points for GED, points for modified diplomas, and points for the IEP diplomas. The federal government-
Does not recognize them.
Does not. They only give credit for standard or advanced. So if you are, we work hard to get our children to stay in and get the GED-
Right.
Or where there's better accommodations to get a modified or to get an IEP diploma, this right here, this page here, shows you that the federal government has said not recognized. And so if you look at them here, you'll see that for the first gap group, which is students with disabilities, limited English language learners, and economically disadvantaged students, we didn't make it. We also didn't make it on, when they broke it apart, the same subgroup, economically disadvantaged alone, and students with special disabilities.
This is in the graduation?
In graduation.
Indicator?
Just in that indicator, that where the federal government doesn't accept three things that the state accepts.
Let me get this straight, the federal government requires, of course, that we implement all kinds of programs for special needs children, economically disadvantaged children. We do everything and get them to graduate with the type of diploma that is best suited, let's say, for their, their learning abilities, and the federal government doesn't recognize-
Doesn't recognize.
That is correct. I don't have to understand it, I just try to report it, yes.
I think it's significant that the state of Virginia is no longer going to have a modified standard diploma.
Right.
For about 33 years.
Right, the state is-
They need to say that their fall was thawing soup. And for all the students to reach the standard of events.
So freshman entering next year, the modified standard diploma will not exist. Our governor and the state, the department has said that they're working on ways to help with different accommodations, so that the standard diploma can be accessible to them. But we've yet to see how they're going to roll that out.
Yeah.
But they are, that is, I wanted you to understand that, because we made all this stuff, and then here, we don't make it.
Can I say, you know, before, when we were dealing with AYP, and we were in the other accountability model, we had issues.
Right.
And now we have a different set of issues.
Yes.
What I mean is, we're starting over again, we have new benchmark marking, but in some respects, some of the issues were alleviated when they began to look at the timeframe that we had to meet certain standards. But in other respects, the way they changed what they would accept for graduation, so I think one of the things that we have to do is really have to analyze all of this and figure out how we're going to look at what we do relative to what these new expectations are.
Exactly, and I know the state's working on that, even by taking away the modified diploma for freshmen starting next year, like I said, they're also working on a plan of how to use our accommodations to support them, so that they can achieve a standard diploma, since the federal government is not accepting them at this point. It is quite interesting, as you pointed out. But as a division, I think we can be pretty proud of, when they rolled out the new waiver, how our division looks. This report, also on the next page, page 15, shows you, thinking away from federal reporting, but just looking at all the SOLs, all the states, now the tests that we give. As a division, how did we do, looking at English, and you'll see the state, division to the state, and they're giving us a three-year look. So they're taking the old data from the last two years, and they have run it through the same filter as they run this new data. So now we can look sort of at longitudinal. I will ask you to be careful, though, because if you look at mathematics, those first two years are the old test.
Right.
So it's really not as smooth to look at as you think. This new, the last year is the new test. And as Dr., I know you've heard a lot about the new tests, it had rigor, it also had interactive items, so it's not only choice. And we're coming out this fall with new reading, with also TE items, and in science, early December, January, so we'll be breaking out other new tests. The next two pages actually show you, looking at writing, history and science, because the new federal AMOs do not address writing, science or history. But they're reporting it out to us. In other words, when they look at, did you make your federal AMO, they're looking at, how did you do in English, reading, and how'd you do in mathematics?
And graduation.
And graduation. They're not looking at this. We used to have a safe harbor, where you could also say, if I didn't make it here, maybe I made it there. We don't have that anymore. So we have a whole new program, and what Dr. Lewis said earlier was really a lie statement. Okay, let's now start again, let's see where we are, how does it work out, and where do we need to support our students? And then the last, page 17, shows you the federal indicator of graduation, how it would look over the cohort years. And like I said, the bulk of this is by school, giving you that same information, but the uniqueness is, it shows you how the school did compared to the state and to the division in each of those categories over three years. And at the very end of the book, you've already heard the great news, but if you want to bask in it a little bit longer, here it is. You can see the SAT results as they have laid out from 1987 to the current. Currently, we have the highest number of students taking it, and also the highest combination score since the new test came out.
Could you say that again?
Louder, or just again?
Well, I think the thing is, I think we have more students taking the SAT than we ever have.
Yes, yes.
And we still are maintaining good outcomes.
Yes, we are. Because if you look where that, when writing came in, and you mentioned that earlier, where we added that, where they added that new piece of the test, this component, if you look at from 2006 and '05 down, that we have the highest score that we've had since the new test.
And considerably more students taking the test.
Absolutely, highest ever.
Which, to me, that's, that's-
It's a win-win.
That's a great indicator.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, encouraging people to stretch.
And retaining quality.
Yeah.
The last page is where we received the award that we're so excited about. And as I was looking at this page, I wrote down, in my book to keep, you know, one of 12 divisions in Virginia. It's so exciting to be recognized. I've been here, this is my 11th year, and when I first got here, one of the first meetings I sat in on, once the school year started up, was Sandra saying, what am I going to do about these AP kids? And so it's exciting to see this, how the progress has made, and we have the highest people taking it, and some of the highest scores. When you look at the getting five, the column of a number of students getting a five, that really excited me.
Oh, wow.
Because we had 77, and before we had 79 in 2010, but a lot less kids took it. And so I just, I hope you'll enjoy seeing the progress. And schools have been received, they'll get this report, but they've also received data throughout as a payment.
Just out of curiosity, I don't know the answer to this, but the years in which our three or above scores were higher percentage were years before students were required to take the AP test, is that correct?
Yes.
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 So we started requiring it in 2004.
Sure it is.
Sure it is.
You can tell.
Sure.
Yeah, that's where we did the diploma.
Right, so I mean, I think that's a great visual to see, that if you want to tweak your three or above, just simply allow students to opt out taking the test, and you'll get a higher three or above score. But we never believed that's the right thing to do, because students should be encouraged to take the test.
Absolutely.
If you're going to take the AP.
And we hit an all-time low in 2003 of students choosing to take it, it was less than what we think was a third of the students, and we thought that wasn't acceptable.
Yep.
So you look, you went from 50 to 42.5%, but you, but look at the difference in the number of students-
Yes.
-who are taking the test.
That's exciting.
So it's really, it's very exciting, it really is. Now the trick is to get that to 50% and continue to require the students, you know-
Well, I heard a report that Eileen Bubin went to this great AP course meeting, and she's got some great strategies, so I think we're on that road.
Good.
All right.
But that's a secret.
Mary, before you sit down, I, we don't get enough opportunity to recognize Mary Wills for the work she does, but I think if you were to ask the people in the schools who, who spend an inordinate amount of their time working with testing, they would tell you that she is the state, she's the guru.
She's the testing guru, right?
In the state call when they can't figure something out. So we're really lucky to have Mary, she does a remarkable job.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. And now I believe Ms. Monaco is going to try to walk us through this purchasing policy.
I'll try to make this quick and painless.
Good.
I guarantee it, though. It's a pleasure to meet you all. I've worked with almost everyone in school board administration, and a lot of the superintendent or supervisory coordinators, and the principals, and people at the schools, but I haven't really had the opportunity to meet the board. I'm Susan Monaco, I'm your procurement manager. I've been with Faukeer County for 16 years in procurement, and for the last five years as the manager. You probably met our senior buyer, Kathy Hagerty, she's the expert in all things construction, and she's a wonderful member of our team as well. We're small, but we're mighty. The reason we, I wanted to talk to you this evening was that Marcy Kotov and I have been working very hard on restructuring, I think this is one of the last policies in the business section of your policy restructuring. And we spent a great deal of time going through procurement policy revisions. For those of you that don't know, the procurement policy was originally adopted in 1996, it's gone through maybe four different revisions on the school board side, but they were very minor. It's never been reformatted or restructured. And it's based on the Virginia Public Procurement Act, which is the law that gives us the ability to purchase with tax dollars. So unlike private sector where you can do anything that doesn't break the law, in public sector, you can only do what the law permits. So it's a huge difference. Traditionally, this policy was structured as one that had both county and school board referred to throughout the policy. The new policy is now school board only, the county will have one that's county only, they're basically mirrors. There are only two sections in the county policy that don't match the schools. So it makes my life a little easier, since I'll be maintaining two policies. The procedures that were given to you just for information, because they don't require board approval, those were completely restructured. They have not been redone since 1996, they've been updated with threshold changes. But the format was 39 pages long originally, it's now down to 19. If you have the opportunity, the policy is dry reading, and I understand that.
It is dry.
Yes, yes. I tried.
I read it this evening, I thought it was faster.
And you're lying.
You may be the minority. But the procedures, they're the implementation of the policy, the procedures are the working manual that your principals and your office associates often look at, and everyone in the outlying offices. Those could be very interesting to you, if you want to understand a little more about what we do and why we do it. So I would encourage you to read the revised procedures, because we put a lot into them, and I'd welcome any comments, suggestions, questions on them. Just a few highlights, and again, I'll be brief on the changes to the procurement policy as you look through it, and then I'll be back at your work session to really address in-depth questions that you have. In section four, that section was formerly entitled "The Office of the Purchasing Agent", and that's been revised and pared down as "Purchasing Authority". It took out a lot of redundancy and a lot of obvious things that were addressed in the old, old policy.
So when you say that that's new, everything else before that's the same?
Pretty much.
Not really?
The format, if you were to take your old policy and look at it with this one next to it, the key components are the same, the structure just looks a little different. It was very antiquated in its layout and format, and we tried to mirror more of what your school policies look like now. But the nuts and bolts are pretty much the same.
Okay.
But that is one section that even the title of the section changed. Unbeknownst to me, the authority given to me as your procurement manager is much different through the school board than it is through the board supervisors. I didn't know, but we found that out. So that is one section that is different in the school board version than it is from the board of supervisors version. The section six, contract formation, there were some changes in the Virginia Public Procurement Act that we didn't necessarily agree with this year in revising this policy. And the main change is that the Virginia Public Procurement Act raised the threshold for competition, the level at which formal bids and proposals are required, from $50,000 to $100,000. That is a huge jump. And we didn't feel comfortable raising that threshold. Traditionally, Faukeer County has usually given the state changes a couple of years, kind of like a new model car, we don't jump right in, we give a few years to see how it goes. We tend to be more conservative than aggressive with the thresholds for competition. We'd rather put more things out to bid and get more aggressive competition than jump up to that $100,000 level. So we held that, we kept that at $50,000. The new Code of Virginia, Virginia Public Procurement Act also permits bond requirements for bonding of construction projects. They raised that to a $500,000 limit. And to us, that just seemed a little too risky to only require bonds for projects $500,000 or above. Right now, we require them for $100,000 or above, and we decided to maintain that. Just because we don't do huge projects, but the projects we do, $100,000 or more that actually require your approval, they're important enough that we feel that they should continue to be bonded for payment and performance bonds. Let's see, the sole source and emergency public posting thresholds, we're at an odd amount of $25,000. It didn't match the sealed bid threshold, so we've raised that to $50,000. Publicly posting means, we put them on the procurement bulletin board, and not many people visit us. But we also post everything on our website, so it is very transparent. We always want to be transparent when it comes to spending the taxpayer dollars. And there are three new sections. One is a section on the single contract term for open-ended architectural and engineering contracts. It's consistent with the Virginia Public Procurement Act, it wasn't in the old policy, I don't know why it wasn't in there, but we've added a little section on that. There is a new section, section F in, in contract formation, section six, that's the use of small purchase or specialized credit cards, very scary. But what that does is, it enables the school board to move forward with establishing procedures for a purchasing card, perhaps a fuel purchasing card, specialty credit cards that are another purchasing tool in your kit bag. Usually, that type of action should be approved in some form or fashion by the board, so by putting this little section in there, we've opened that door. And you'll want to read through that, and you may have some questions for me at the work session on that. The other section that's fairly new was the, oh, the last one, exemptions and exceptions. We've always had a section in the policy for exemptions, those were things that the Code of Virginia says are legally exempt from competition. Legal services relative to litigation have always been exempt from competition. But there are exceptions that are not quite exempt, but it's not practical to require a sole source for them all the time or to bid them out. Those were lifted from the Commonwealth of Virginia Manual, the, I think it's the DPSPM, it's a huge acronym. Fairfax County Public School Policy had them, there were some other policies that had them, we never had that. And I'm very excited about that section, because for people like Sandra Mitchell and other people on the fourth floor, this is going to make their paperwork a little lighter, and they won't have to fill out as many forms to get purchase orders that really can't go to anyone but these certain sources through very easy and seamlessly. So I encourage you to read that section, because that is brand new. The only other thing I'd like to call your attention to when you're reviewing this is, again, in the procedures, which are more for your information than anything else. Page three has a purchasing method table, we've not had this in past procedures, it's like the Quick Users Manual of what the thresholds for competition are and what's required at each threshold. And it's very interesting reading if you want to look at that. That derives the rest of section five, which is how we do each of the actions that require competition. Imitation forbid, request for proposal, sole source, emergency, and informal bidding. So that's kind of a new, a cool new addition in there. We are introducing, after Marcy and I went back and forth on this a couple times, a payments- payment stamp option. Rather than using this paper voucher form that we have, that's a half-page or a page of paper that gets stapled to an invoice, we're looking at getting a payment stamp that you just stamp right on the invoice and seamlessly send it to a company to pay the invoice very quickly. So that's another option where we're trying to improve the ability to pay invoices quicker and with a little bit of paper, which is encouraging. There's a contract administration section in the new procedure manual that we never had before, and that was actually lifted from a much longer version in Loudoun County's manual. We looked at, my internal team looked at a ton of policies and procedures in trying to revamp ours. And I'm very happy to say that Marcy took a really hard look at these and came up with very good questions and pared it down even further. So I'm very comfortable with the end product, I think it's one of the best, tightest policies that we've had. Probably a little longer than you're used to seeing, but the Virginia Public Procurement Act is even longer than that, and we're really customizing it to suit Faukeer County School Board. And the only other issue that's different in this new set of procedures is, there were accounts payable forms in there before, vendor number request forms, and vouchers, those aren't really procurement forms, so we've left them out. We have a sample purchase order in there. Like I said, it may not be riveting reading to you, we're, we're very passionate about what we do in procurement, but I'm hopeful that you'll like what you see, and that if it raises questions, please, please, ask me any questions you want, and I'll be hopefully ready to answer them.
Okay, and it would be good if we could get you those questions ahead of time.
Yeah, that would be nice.
Wednesday before.
Before you sit down, because we haven't had you here before.
Right.
I want to take advantage of the opportunity to thank you publicly for your work with our schools in managing publications, and could you tell the board a little bit about your work, and, because I think that was extraordinary, and it's really changed, it's helped us a great deal.
This was a very interesting dilemma that we faced. There's a section in the exemption in the Virginia Public Procurement Act that we had always interpreted to mean, we don't have to bid out yearbooks, classrooms, school pictures, or yearbooks, graduation materials, and school pictures. And after we took a closer look at it, we realized that it said that you didn't have to do a formal solicitation, as long as each school made sure they competitively obtained pricing every year before they went out and did their yearbooks and their school pictures. Well, look at all of our schools, and look at everything that they have to do, and, and they're not as familiar with bidding.
Right.
As we are. So we decided to tackle them one at a time. We took one a year, and we started with school pictures. And we had a committee of, school principals, I think, were mostly on, on the school picture solicitation. We did an RFP, request for proposal. One of the things the schools wanted was choice. They did not want one vendor, they wanted a fallback, they wanted a variety, and a a la carte menu. So we did the first-ever RFP for school pictures, and we allowed offers to put in proposals for elementary, middle, and high school, or all three, or any combination thereof. And the committee had quite the time wading through all their proposals, for many of them, it was their first time going through this process. And we did interviews, we did some negotiations with the school picture companies, and in the end, we locked in, I think, six contracts, maybe? Yeah. So that the schools all had a variety of contracts to choose from. The big dogs got the high school, you know, Victor O'Neill and Life Touch were the biggest players.
But they had to sharpen their pencil.
Oh, yes, they did, because they knew.
Good.
Here's what was happening. They would go to Mary Walter Elementary and give them one deal, and then they'd go to Coleman Elementary and give them a completely different deal, different freebies, different things. It was not apples to apples. It wasn't consistent throughout the district, and I find that very upsetting. I think the schools should all benefit from strength in numbers, and this definitely gave the photographers the burden of being entirely transparent. And we told them, if you want to increase your benefits package, if you want to include different options for people to choose from when they contract with you for that school year, you're going to put it out there for everybody. Don't do anything for Bromfield that you won't do for Gray Smaller, because we won't have it. It has to be for everyone. And we kind of caught them a little. In the first year, it was an adjustment for them, too, to realize how transparent they had to be. But it's really, so far, I think the schools have really enjoyed that and benefited from that. Now, the next one was yearbooks, and that was even tougher. But for yearbooks, we got the high school yearbook advisors on the committee, which was the best move we ever could have done, because those people are tough. They put these yearbook offers through their paces. And again, and some of them came through finding out, well, how come, you know, Kettle Run got all of these benefits, and, and we never got these at Liberty? They're not that far apart, but these people don't always have the opportunity to sit down and talk to each other. And in some ways, I think the vendors play one against the other, which really isn't fair. So again, we have a variety of yearbooks. We had a couple of new companies come in and just knock our socks off with the offers that they were making, very exciting, very cutting-edge, a lot of online tools and, and selection that can be made. So we have yearbooks under contract, we have school pictures under contract. I haven't tackled graduation materials yet. Fortunately, that'll only be the high schools.
Well, that's wonderful.
This has done for us two things. Number one, it's increased the value, because we're getting more from the vendors than we were before. But also, it protects our schools, because they no longer have to worry about going through the processes.
Oh, yeah.
It's done.
It's all done for them.
And they can pick from this approved list.
And everything's online, so anything they want, they just go to the procurement website, click on the contact information, they've got everything at their fingertips. They come to me if they have problems, but.
The reason I brought it up, Sue, is because I realize what an extraordinary amount of work it was for you to do that, and I really appreciate your willingness to tackle it, because it's the kind of thing, once you do it and you have it in place.
Then it's easier.
It's much easier the next time you do it, right. But thank you for doing it. I wanted the board to know that you've done that for us.
Thank you, appreciate it. So I look forward to leaving with you at the work session.
Right.
Right, and we'll get questions to you the week prior to that.
Wednesday, Wednesday before.
Yep, my email address, I check my email all the time at work, so you can just shoot them to me anytime you want.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, move to action items. First one, gifted education plan.
I move that the school board approve the gifted education plan as presented at the October 22 special school board meeting and work session.
Motion and a second that the school board approve the gifted education plan as presented at the October 22 special school board meeting and work session. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and that motion passes, and we move to the VSBA legislative positions.
Um, yeah.
Do you want to make a?
I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
I move that the school board approve a vote in favor of the 2013 VSBA president-elect and board of director nominees, the 2013 VSBA legislative positions, and the VSBA bylaws revisions.
Motion and a second that the school board approve a vote in favor of the 2013 VSBA president-elect and board of director nominees, the 2013 VSBA legislative positions, and VSBA bylaws revisions. Any discussion? You're going.
I'm going on Thursday.
On Thursday. I read over.